Welcome to the June 8 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. In accordance with our open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded and I'll ask that if there's anybody else being recording this meeting, we'd like to hear from them now. If not, may we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
First, on our agenda tonight, we have some public comments and I'll ask for Kenny Thea to come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, Madam Town Manager, good evening. My name is Kenny Thea, I live at 404 Leicester Street. As you all know, we are now part of the William Chaffey Blackstone Heritage Corridor and I have been asked to do a ranger walkabout, which I agreed with. It's coming up shortly, so I figured I'd come up here and invite you and anybody in the viewing audience at home. I know all the rest of it, but I've forgotten the date. It's June 25, 6:30, and it's at 78 Havana Road. It's actually the parking lot for the Worcester Hebrew Cemetery, which is located in Auburn. And it's going to go something like this. I will tell a brief history of the cemetery as we walk through there. And when we get down to the back part of the cemetery, we will be skirting the, what today is a CSX railroad. It's a very early railroad, it went in in 1839. I'm going to give you a little bit of history of that railroad with some pictures of some of the early cars that would have run on it and just a general information, bringing it up to date, what it is, why it's there, things like that. From there, we will walk down the trail and we will see the ruins of the abandoned stone crusher that went out of business in 1927. It was steam powered. I've done quite a bit of research on it and can give you a pretty detailed description of what went on there, why it was there, what was made there. And I think probably the thing that would be most interesting, it is to me anyways, is that at that time was the highest point in town, it was 946 feet above sea level. And today it's Crowl Hill, which is 882, I believe it. And that's quite a ways from there. The reason that that was changed was that they dynamited so much rocks off that hill that it changed the town's whole geography. I'll give you more details on that, we have the door from the old steam crusher and you can kind of figure out how it worked. In the same location, after the steam crusher went out of business, an Auburn resident who more or less had a problem with alcohol and stopped working, and his name was Bill, and he more or less took that over at a time that, well, when the Depression started, a lot of people were traveling throughout the country, they were known as hobos. So he was a self-proclaimed caretaker of the old stone crusher and its buildings and wells. And he invited these hobos to live in there and they've, I'm not going to go into a lot of details, but they would take an Indian head nickel and they would fashion artwork on it and try to barter meals from it. And I'm going to tell all about them, I'll have some samples of the nickels there that were, Auburn's Jack Harroyan was nice enough to let me borrow. And they actually were so sophisticated that if they were going to leave that area and go perhaps over to Burnett Street and there was a house there, they wanted to try to get a meal, see what they, they had insignias that the person before them had put there, whether they were going to get greeted by a mad dog, somebody with a shotgun, a woman that would give them a meal if they listened to a little bit of religion, it goes on and on and on. But it's free, anybody's welcome to go to it. We will have one box ranger there. I don't know what else I can tell you.
Again, Kenny, if you would, please, just give us the date and the time again.
I have to read it again because I'm old and I don't remember anything. No, it's June 25 at 6:30.
June 25.
I'm sure Sharon's got it written.
June 25 at 6:30 PM.
6:30, and again, it's, if you go down Havana Road, it's a lot easier on your vehicle, Cemetery Road is really bad, but Havana Road will bring you to the same place, so that would be the way I would recommend you going there. You don't need to tell me you're going, you just show up there and I think we'll have a good time.
And I would recommend that if you're going to walk to the stone crusher from the Hebrew Cemetery, wear some good walking shoes because strap rock is a little tough. Kenny, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
If there's nobody else, I forget to sign up on me.
Okay, we have one more item on the public comments.
Just a quick one, to give recognition to another one of our local teams, even though there are no playoffs for the junior varsity. Last week, Auburn's junior varsity girls softball team completed an undefeated season. If you didn't get a chance to see these girls play together, you rarely miss something. They were incredible, they had, out of, I think, 17 games, something like that, they had three close games, the rest of them were over by the fifth inning, they mercied all the other teams they played. They had an incredible year, it's a shame there's no playoff for those girls because they certainly would shine across the state if they had the opportunity. So I just want to take a minute to give them some kudos.
Okay, thank you. And now, I'd like to invite Ellen Gabry up to the desk with us, please. It gives me great pleasure to welcome her tonight. Ellen has been a fixture in the town for many, many years, providing all kinds of services to the town with different committees and the town clerk's office, as well as the registrar of voters, she's done an awesome job in town and it is her time to move on and retire and we are definitely going to miss her with her activities in town, her smiling face always around Town Hall, it's going to be a little difficult to fill her shoes, but we would like to congratulate you and thank you for coming here tonight.
Oh, you're welcome.
Would you like to offer any board members?
So I'll start. Ellen, thank you so much. There have been so many changes during your tenure as Assistant Town Clerk and Town Clerk, whether it be the changes or the addition to the Massachusetts Ethics Commission or changes to municipal government, changes to election law, and you have been there every step of the way without skipping a beat, keeping the residents informed as they need be, you know, elections going off without a hitch. And I say that even if there was a hitch, it was handled properly according to the Secretary of State's office. So congratulations, you've earned this retirement, you've earned this relaxation and it will, they will be big shoes to fill, but I am confident that our new Town Clerk Deb Grimo is up to the task and she's, you know, you've been a wonderful mentor to her and I'm sure that you will enjoy your retirement and Deb will step in and we won't skip a beat in the Town Clerk's office, so congratulations.
Oh, thank you very much. Ellen, I want to keep this short and sweet. Thank you, thank you for everything that you have done and you truly have been a mentor to me, you have been there and I appreciate everything. And I wish you nothing but the best and thank you for living next to my boys.
Oh.
Ellen, I didn't want you to leave, but you did anyways, so, nothing against Deb, but, you know, it was great to have a chance to interact with you over the many years and thank you so much for what you did for the town. You are an exemplary example of what it should be to be a town official and for my sake, I just want to thank you and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
All stated.
Thank you, Dan. And I'd turn it over to our Town Manager, please.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, wish you the very best. And just to let everybody know, since the day I started here, which is over four and a half years ago now, Ellen was welcoming, I realized that the office is an elected position, but we have had a tremendous working relationship and Ellen has attended all of our department head meetings when she can't, she has had Deb, the assistant, prior assistant, do so. And we've just built a good relationship with town administration and it works well. There is, every department in the town interacts with the Town Clerk's office, so we have a great relationship and I'm absolutely looking forward to working with Deb to continue that relationship. Deb has been in many of the meetings and part of most of the initiatives that we've worked on together, but on a personal note, I just really want to thank you, not just for being a good colleague, but for being a good friend.
Oh, thank you very much.
Now, is there anybody from the audience like to come forward and say anything? Please.
Well, I just want to wish Ellen the best in her retirement. I enjoyed working with her, every day I did, in fact, it was me who hired her, but she had worked for the town before that, which made it a much easier transition. It always is easier if you come to a town job knowing something about the town and the town boards. Ellen, I hope you enjoy your retirement every day and if you enjoy it half as much as I enjoy mine, you'll be a happy lady.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Proudey. Mr. Baker.
Yes, I have enjoyed working with Ellen, I mean, she's my cohort, I guess we could say, in running town meeting, what would I do without her? She'll certainly be missed, I hope she enjoys, has a lot of fun, but not too much, you know, I am a Puritan on her retirement. And fortunately, we've been blessed with great town clerks, we have John Riley, Doris, Beth, now Ellen, and with a new one coming on board, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Is there anybody else? Our new Town Clerk Debbie Grimo.
I thought my speech days were over. Anyways, I also want to thank Ellen, she's been a great mentor and a great person to work for, she's been a great Town Clerk, she knows everything. And I want to wish you success and on your new future endeavors with everything that's going on in your life, so, much happiness and thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else? Well, I'd like to ask the Vice Chairman to read a proclamation for our retiring Town Clerk.
It is from the Board of Selectmen, a proclamation, whereas the Auburn Board of Selectmen takes great pride in recognizing those employees whose efforts have made our community a better place to live. And whereas Ellen C. Gabry has given selflessly of her time and talents to the Auburn community and whereas Ellen C. Gabry served as Assistant Town Clerk from December 12, 1994 to April 12, 2002, and as the Auburn Town Clerk from April 12, 2002 to May 19, 2015, whereas Ellen Gabry's civic dedication exemplifies a true citizen of Auburn and should be emulated by all citizens. And now therefore we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, recognize and congratulate Ellen Gabry and sincerely thank her for her many years of service to the Town of Auburn.
Thank you. I guess I thought my speech days were all over. I have been enjoying my retirement, sleeping a little bit later, sewing costumes for Stage Left in Starbridge have kept me quite busy, my fiance is very happy to have a little more time of, you know, my, able to, of my, a little more of my time. And yes, I enjoyed my 20-plus years working for the Town of Auburn, it was a pleasure, I met a lot of really good people, I have had a lot of wonderful feedback from residents and voters, and I guess there isn't anything else to say, I mean, I'm embarking on a new career and looking forward to it.
Great, well deserved.
The only thing I can say to you, Ellen, is thank you so very much, congratulations and please, come back and see us.
Oh, sure.
Don't be a stranger to us, thank you. Well done.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for a brief recess so people can congratulate Ms. Gabry as well as get set up for our joint meeting.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Good idea.
Thank you. We'll recess. Let the call on meeting back to order. I would ask for a motion to move up item 5B1.
5D?
5B, as in void.
Motion to move up 5B1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a, under gift acceptances, we have a donation from the Auburn Little League and I'll ask Bill Coyle to come up and explain a little bit about this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This evening with me is Dave Norman. Dave is the President of the Auburn Little League and he is working with the DPW relative to getting the dugouts constructed at the Pappas recreational facility. We currently have dugouts constructed at the Kamasi Field and also the Pappas Field for the softball girls, and we've constructed one dugout on Fuller Field. And the Little League is graciously donating $5,000 to the Town of Auburn to assist us with the construction of the remaining dugout. So Mr. Norman is here to present the town with a check of $5,000 to assist us with that construction.
Well, that's incredible, we thank you very, very much and the kids are going to benefit greatly by this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Mr. Norman, would you care to say anything tonight?
Sure.
This is quite a gift and we'd like to recognize you for what you've done.
Thank you. I just, you know, on behalf of Auburn Little League, I just wanted to thank the town, its residents, and most importantly, the Pappas family for giving us a great facility and we really feel like it's our responsibility to continue to give back to the facility. So that's what, not myself, but our members have done here tonight. So, you know, we're the envy of every town in Central Mass with our facility and we want it to be the best it can be and that's what this is about tonight, so thank you.
The kids are the best and they are going to have the best, thank you very, very much.
Great, thank you.
And, Mrs. Simontian.
There's no financial interest there at all, but just for the sake of disclosure, I do have an affiliation with the Little League because I coach one of the softball teams that's run by the Little League, so just want to put that out there because I am somewhat affiliated with it, but thank you, that's great.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
And send a letter to the League?
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Now, back to our agenda, we have, under item 3B, the BYOB juice bar license, and I've received a email tonight and it's going to Patsy Borogod, it says, "Hi Pat, I am withdrawing my BYOB light application because I did not send out letters to the abuddies through certified mail. I would like to relist and reapply as soon as possible." So this will be put off until we hear otherwise on an application. Next, I have Mr. Bob Grossman, an update on the School Billings Committee. Would you, podium or whatever was comfortable for you, Bob?
First, I'd like to say that it's been a few days since I got the report because I missed your last meeting by a couple of days, so we're farther along than some of the percentages that I'm going to give you this evening. But as a new middle school project nears completion, it remains on schedule and under budget. Construction, as of over a week ago, was 81% complete, so it's got to be in the high 80s right now. And it's still on track to meet July 7 substantial completion date. And below are some of the highlights of this project. The exterior of the building, roof, brick, veneer, windows, doors, are complete with the exception of one opening that will be used for the delivery of lockers to the second floor. The landscape contractor is spreading loam and seating the grassed areas of the site. They have also received the trees and plants that were chosen for the site and are beginning to plant them. Site sidewalks and dumpster pads have been poured with concrete. The precast sign for the school on the site is being coordinated to be installed near the entrance as we speak. Granite curbing is around 90% complete. The building interior, before I go into the comments that I make, I'm going to make on the interior, I'm going to, I was informed that yesterday, that this is the last week that the interior crew will be working in the school, they expect to be all done on the interior this week. Once the lockers are installed, all classrooms receive their final clean, the academic wing will be complete. Millwork is being installed in the media center, linoleum flooring is being installed in the academic wing and is now being laid out in the cafeteria. Terrazzo flooring in the main lobby should be completed by the end of next week, so it should be completed at this point now. Capit is being installed in specified areas throughout the building. The gym floor, the bleachers, gym equipment, divider curtain are all installed. The gym should be 100% complete within the first few weeks of June, so we're almost 100% there. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are up and running with ongoing system tests and inspections. Some lights and miscellaneous devices are still being installed. The kitchen equipment is installed. Startup and testing will take place over the next few weeks. And all interior wooden doors are installed and equipped with the specified hardware. That's where we stand.
Well done, looks like it's moving along very, very nicely and it's going to be a great building for us to have and we'd be looking forward to getting in there to see it. Does anybody on the Board got any questions or comments? Mr. Carpenter.
Bob, I just wanted to thank you for keeping us up to date and for your continued service to the town, it's great to see your continuation and you've brought much-needed information to the Board so that we're up to date on everything that's going on, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
And I'll just say, I'll echo what Mr. Carpenter said, thank you as acting as our designee for the School Buildings Committee. You know, one of our goals is to stay updated on these Boards and Commissions and having, you know, residents like yourself willing to act as our representative certainly, you know, takes the burden off of trying to attend every meeting, so thank you for the thorough report, thank you for your continued involvement. And we look forward to the final, shall we say, report when you announce the, how well the opening went.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I would invite, oh, is there anything else?
I don't know if you want to, or do you want to just go into here?
Um, let's see, we can do this, this should be, yeah, I would entertain a motion to move up Town Manager item 6A.
This will move.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll ask Amy Sullivan to come up, please.
Thank you. For the chair, hi Amy. I will let Amy explain this, but again, we're here seeking the authorization to file and accept grant funds under a program that the town has been fortunate enough to receive funds in the past and it is that time again to apply for those funds. And I will turn to Amy to explain what it is we're doing and what the dollar amount is.
So it is the same grant we applied for and were awarded last year, it's the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, municipal grant through the state, the Mass DEP. And the section that we're going to apply for is, again, the same as last year, it's called Recycling Dividends Program. And this provides grant money to municipalities that have implemented good recycling programs, so, you know, we're working hard to reduce waste in the town, there's certain criteria, like we have the leaf pickup, that's one of the eligibility criteria, we have no bulky waste pickup, we have the trash limit, the trash barrel, that's only 64 gallons, that counts as one of the points towards this grant. So we have not yet even spent all of the grant money from last year, we got $2,800 for 2014 and we had a recycling educational program that was presented at the two schools, grade three through five, and so that was $1,200, we still have $1,600 left from this year. So depending on if we get another $2,800, there's lots of opportunities for waste reduction programs we can discuss, explore, you know, once we find out if we have that money or not, if we're awarded the grant, so it would be used towards recycling initiatives and waste reduction programs.
Okay, then members, are there any questions?
Are there restrictions on the use of this grant?
The restrictions, it has to be, the funds have to be used on designated activities and equipments, equipment to enhance waste reduction. So they give you approved activities and equipment and if it's something that's not on the list, I would have to reach out to the people in Boston and ask if it's an approved activity. So for instance, the educational program, I did have to get specific written approval to have, to use the funds for that.
So it's not something we could use to, like, give relief to residents on their trash bills?
No.
No?
No. It would be more like providing additional recycling carts, for the overflow recycling carts, or providing bins for maybe the new school. We've talked about maybe getting some new recycling bins for some of the schools because I know they have really old outdated equipment for recycling, something like that potential.
So, yeah, I have one more question to the Town Manager. Is the town, is the town responsible for the trash and recycling bins at the Pappas Complex?
Yes.
I don't, I mean, I don't know what the determination was of how many we were necessary up there, but I can tell you that there have been times when, at the end of a Saturday and Sunday, where there's, every field has been in use pretty much both days and there's trash overflowing from the containers at times. And I'm sure, you know, it's been a pain because it's blowing around up there and, you know, instead of just going up and emptying trash bins, you've probably got to pick up trash out of the bushes and stuff like that. So I don't know if we, possibility of maybe adding one or two up there would be something we could look at, just a thought.
Yeah, public space recycling is certainly a potential that we could use the grant money for.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Mr. Carpenter.
Just a quick question. Thank you for putting in all the time and effort, first of all. I know you've championed the solid waste and the recycling program over the years, so it should not go without notice how much time and effort you and your committee have put into it. Has there been any discussion at the committee level as to what you would use the $2,800 for?
Not at this time, we have not, we're just in the We're just in the, you know, the application process still, so we need to get approval to apply for it and then I think in the fall, they would let us know if we receive the grant or not.
And just as a follow-up, you, you mentioned that you weren't able to expend the total of last, last year's grant. Any idea what you might direct that to?
We have talked about getting some recycle bins for the new school.
Okay.
But we've been, time has been an issue, so we're trying to work that all out.
All right. Well, I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Just to follow up on the mention of the unused grant funds, is there any portion of the grant application that asks whether you have unused grant funds for this purpose?
Um, no, but I do have to document and report on what we've spent and where we're at because this is, it's not a reimbursement. They actually issue us, issue us a check first and then we have to report, document what we've spent the funds on, so.
So, is there any concern applying for the second grant that you have, you know, for a similar purpose, unused grant funds? And is there an opportunity to explain in the application that, you know, any unused grant funds from the previous application would be combined for this use? So, we, so the state knows that you have, you're not just out fishing for money, that you have a specific use for it?
I don't think so. I don't think so. There might be a comment section somewhere, I can check. It's all electronic filing, so I can check.
Is there any concern that you have?
Seeing how it's just the beginning of June, I'm not really concerned.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. Anything else? Yeah, we entertain a motion?
I would make a motion that we authorize the, to file and accept grant funds for the Mass DEP Grant Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Recycling Dividends Program.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda, I'd like to invite up the Open Space Committee. I've got three seats on this side and there's a couple of seats on the other side, I'd like to have you all come up.
Plenty of open space to sit in. Huh? How about that? Oh, boy.
It was intended to be.
Sometimes those are the best ones.
You guys still want to leave in here?
Now, watch out, leave it in my house. Remind me. Is your meeting still in session or have you adjourned?
We recessed and so we actually, if I might ask for a motion to reopen our meeting.
Would you please?
Is there a motion to reopen? Someone?
Make a motion to reopen our, the meeting at the open space.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so voted.
Okay, one of the first, one of the first things I'd like to ask you to do is to go along and introduce yourselves so that the public can see who's on our Open Space Committee.
Okay, would you like me to introduce?
Please.
I'm Ann Weston and to my left is Louise Downey. She's also on the Conservation Commission and she's the Vice Chairman of the Committee, the Open Space Committee. And to her left is Alex, Alex Calasa, was determined not to butcher his name. Over on the far end is Mark Benal and next to him is John Anderson.
Okay, welcome. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I'm going to ask for a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so, our meeting is open. And I would like to turn this over to our Town Manager to just give us a start of where we want to be with this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen and the Open Space and Recreation Committee. And again, thank you kindly for serving for us. This is going to be an exciting time, looking at what to do with not just the former, it's nice to say the former 61A land, the now-town land, as well as in the future to look at uses of other town properties. But our priority now and the purpose that the board intended for tonight's hearing was to solicit input from the public and from yourselves as members of the committee as to what thoughts you had for the use of the land. So, I just want to quickly summarize the project and the reason for tonight's joint hearing. After a lengthy process that is dictated by Chapter 61A of Mass General Law, the town sovereign actually purchased almost 50 acres of land off of South Hold Road and the purchase went through a march of 2015. Now, town administration at the time had banned, which means short-term borrowing the money, and we will go out in September for a refunding of this 2.865 million. And the reason we are here this evening is to, as well as potentially another hearing, I think the board might have voted to have two or so hearings, is to talk about what options you could have for the use of the land. And we just want to point out that we need to know if we go out, our bans expire in September 15th of 2015. And we need to know by the end of July or your August meeting at the latest, August 10th at the very latest, based on the schedule we got yesterday, Ed, from the bond, our financial advisors, we need to know whether we will be going for all tax exempt bonds or non-tax exempt bonds. So, really, the reason, the reason for this hearing and the discussion that needs to take place is whether 100% of the land would be retained for municipal use, in which case it is a tax exempt use, or if there'd be some portion of the land that would be used for a non-municipal taxable use. At this point, you don't necessarily need to know exactly what you want to do with the land and you have time to do that, but if you want to use any part of it for a non-municipal, non-tax exempt use, then you do need to know that now. And I can let Ed explain how the bond works, but that's basically why we're here, this, the discussion tonight, the discussion that will take place at future meetings will help drive our financing strategy for moving forward. So, I'm going to let Ed explain the bonding process and the financing options because we were asked to just reiterate what, how we could possibly fund this and what are some of our options.
Uh, thank you, Julie. And based upon the discussion we had with our financial advisors this morning, a number of issues came up that potentially we could be faced with, all depending on the use of the 50 acres of property. As the Town Manager has indicated, we are currently, we currently banned the 2.865 million because we had to make payment within 90 days of the board's decision. We had 90 days to close. That payment has been made. The maturity date on the ban is approaching with a September 15th date. And that's why we, early on, asked the board that they needed to consider the use of the property to determine what, what options we would take when September 15th rolls around. The board is not obligated, the town is not obligated to bond that this September. We could rule it for another year. Or if, if a decision is made on the use of the property, then we could carve out a portion of that 50 acres. If it's determined that it's going to be developed, there's going to be some income derived as a result of a sale or lease of the property, that doesn't qualify that portion as a tax exempt component of our bond issue. So, not knowing what direction this is going to go in, we need to make a decision if we want to bond the 2.865 by early August, thus allowing us enough time to value the portion of land that is going to be developable, as well as allocate and put a value on the property that should remain as open space. And not knowing how that would be divided at this point is really something we can't consider until a decision is made. Another item I'd like to talk about is a callable provision on any bonds that we may go out for. I was asked as a result of a question or a statement made by a board member that we could pay these bonds off at any point. We know of no authorization that will allow a municipality to do that. We could pay down upon a callable provision that's associated or attached to the bond. I can tell you our 10-year bond issues come with an eight-year callable provision, just like we did with the high school. At that point, you're allowed to pay down and refinance that issue on the balance that is remaining. Even if we wanted to, we could not pay the bonds off early. Only time you can do it is when the callable provision is exercised. Question is, can you do it before the eight-year callable provision? You can. You can build in a callable provision earlier than eight years, but, uh, Bond Council said it's not, it's so costly that the town wouldn't even want to consider that because there's an element of risk to the bondholders that actually puts them in jeopardy. It is very rarely done, in most cases is not even considered. So, I want to make that clear because it wasn't some discussion if some income were to be derived from the property, that we could pay those bonds off early. That, that's not the case. There were some issues raised about a housing component on the property. And let me just tell you the options we discussed with Bond Council relative to a question raised by a board member. The question raised was could the town partner up with a charitable organization, negotiate a lease, long-term lease for the property, and require that affordable housing or low-income housing be a component of, of a portion of this property? Bond Council indicated, under three different scenarios, how that could play out, under a taxable, under non-taxable bond issue. Under option one, the town would own the property and the project, no lease would be a component of that agreement. The town would have to rent housing, so we'd be in the business of renting housing and we'd have to hire a manager to oversee the project. Under scenario two, the town would be allowed to issue bonds, provided that a 501(c)(3) entity was involved. The property would be owned and leased to the charitable organization, we would own it and lease it to them. Under that scenario, Bond Council would require that a real estate professional be hired to determine the value of that property versus the open space component of that property. An acreage value would need to be determined and Bond Council would be required to review and approve that allocation methodology. Under option three, the town could issue tax exempt debt for town-owned land that is leased to a developer who agrees to meet a certain percentage of affordable housing I want to emphasize that the interest rates under that scenario would be greater than the first two options that I identified, but it can be done under a tax exempt bond Yes, and under that scenario, it would be, there would be a low-income provision for senior housing that would be allowed as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Simontian.
If, if we were, if we were talking about the housing components, under option three where you mentioned the tax exempt debt, we would be, so we would be selling part of that land to a developer with, with the provision that part of it would be for 40B?
This would be a lease arrangement with a developer.
So, we would lease land to him, he would build the housing? And you said the interest rates would be higher, but if we were leasing that land, could we use the money that we receive for leasing the land to pay down the debt? See, would that mitigate that interest? Could we pay part of that off with that or?
Well, and I think in, under all these scenarios, because this can twist and turn a number of different ways, all depending on the elements of that agreement, they would have to review it because if you're deriving income from the property, it really puts you, it changes that status from a taxable to a, a non-taxable status, or non-taxable to a taxable status. They were very clear that they would have to review each and every one of these options because one little component of that could really change the whole chemistry of the...
So, in that, in that scenario, because I, I think you mentioned that in, in previous conversations about the, the, the status changing, if, if part of that, if we went that route and part of that, when the part that changes to taxable, is that taxes the town will be liable for all the time, even on the land that's being leased? Or, because when those, when the housing becomes occupied, is that then the taxes that would be borne by the owners of those properties or is, is that all on the town for the land that flips to a taxable status in that scenario?
No, I think when it flips to a taxable status, then because we borrowed tax exempt bonds, it changes the use, it changes the status of the project.
Yep.
So, we would be charged a penalty, interest, and things of that nature because the use has changed. One thing I, I, I think, one thing we were clear about early on is the town could decide to get tax-free bonds, tax exempt bonds for a period of 10 years and do nothing with the property other than keeping for open space. Once those bonds mature, then you could sell off a portion without any penalty. It's only for the duration of the terms that you're paying those bonds for.
Okay, yeah, that makes, um, so if, if we were considering that option, and I'm just asking because this was one of the options presented, not, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of one over the other or anything, but in that scenario, if, if the board was going to consider doing that, would it then not make sense, wouldn't it make sense for us not to bond whatever part was going to be leased for developing housing?
If you decide to carve out 20 acres that you want to sell or you want to have developed, they have to put a value on that.
Okay.
So, we can, for the 30 acres, we could get tax exempt bonds. For the 20 acres, whatever that value may be, we would get taxable bonds.
Okay, that's, all right, thank you.
I'd like to just jump in here for a minute. The Open Space Committee, you're welcome to ask questions. This is an open hearing and if you have any questions and you don't quite understand something as we're going through, please, you know, ask, ask questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I, I also just want to make a comment. The board member had asked us to look into senior housing, senior low-income housing, and the fact that it's senior or not senior does not appear to carry any additional status regarding the tax exempt. It's the income factor that drives it. So, whether it's senior low-income housing or low-income housing available to all ages, the fact that it's low-income housing would drive that tax exempt, potential tax exempt status depending on the entity that is doing that.
Okay. Mrs. Weston.
Um, just a question, since I'm on the Auburn Housing Authority, if the town, this is just a question, if the town were to partner in some fashion with the Housing Authority, would that affect or impact the taxable versus the non-taxable bonding status? Inasmuch as the Housing Authority is a public entity, I realize it's not town, but it's a public entity, and if it were for public housing for the public good, would that then be considered a non-taxable bonding use?
Well, there are a number of, of things that really determine whether it's taxable or non-taxable. Certainly, if it were a subsidized, if there was subsidized housing from the federal government...
Or the state.
Which it is. And there was a low-income provision that we would have to meet, we believe it would meet that status.
The, the non-taxable?
Right.
Okay.
But it, once again, it all depends on terms, conditions, things of that nature.
Okay. So, the town would still, if that were, if that were the case, the town would still maintain ownership of the property?
We'd have to have a, a lease?
A small, like, like a, a $1 lease or something?
Uh, not only that, but you'd have to have a term of 50 years or, and that would, I want to make it clear, a, a term of, of that length would require an approval by Town Manager.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if, if I may jump in just to follow up on that too. There's two different issues here with regard to the Auburn Housing Authority. One is the ability to borrow bond, to, to bond, and what is the tax exempt status of a bond, versus the other is what is the ability to actually partner with a group and go through the 40B process? So, there are two different issues. So, the bonding is the financing of it, but then there's the procurement issue, which according to Town Council, we thought we found an exemption for the Auburn Housing Authority and they just reached out to the IG's office today, Inspector General's office, who did respond that we could partner with, so- office, who did respond that we could partner with, so-called partner with the Auburn Housing Authority, but there are still a number of steps that would have to be taken, including , uh, setting valuations and assessments and some type of transfer or lease through that way. So we're not sure yet. We're waiting for the IG to give us a little more information on whether it could actually be done for a minimal number, or you're actually required under 30B. So it's different, 30B versus the tax-exempt bond status, but one is going to have something to do with the other.
And, and I, I just want to make it clear. I'm, I'm always speaking for myself as a member of the Housing Authority. I am not in any fashion representing the Housing Authority. I'm just really gathering information. So thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to, uh, before we get to the board, I'm going to ask, there's been a lot of information already posted out here. Has anybody from the audience got any questions or any comments about what's been discussed so far? Would you please identify yourself?
Chuck Millar, leave at 34 Arlington Street in Auburn. Don't really have any questions specifically. I just wanted to make a statement. I'd love to see that land remain some kind of recreational area, a little bit of different recreation than we have now, uh, like a walking trail, hiking trails, dog park, even a bike path. With the increased traffic in Auburn, it has become increasingly more difficult to do any training in this town in terms of running or biking, because you're constantly dodging traffic. The other thing I'd like to say is that you cannot really go on a family bike ride in Auburn. If you want to ride as a family on your bicycles, you have to pack everyone up and go to other towns like Hudson or Westford, places that have dedicated areas for that type of recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Through the chair, I can just, uh, this may help the board make that decision, but a few weeks ago, we had come to the board for authorization to apply for and receive grant funds from the Blackstone Valley Regional Heritage Court of Commission, and we did apply for and receive a grant for $15,000 to develop a walking trail through this, through a portion of the new land, uh, along the edge of the property that connects to the Pappas Recreation Complex. Our intent and hope is down the road, maybe in a Phase 2, we could connect over toward Route 20 where the bike trail is. So that's something that we are kind of working on, but I wanted the board to be aware. We did get that, that grant to follow up on this gentleman's comments, and it, it makes sense to do some type of a walking trail. You could still do that and not have it impact the bulk of the land if you wanted to look at other uses. We could extend it more, uh, a little closer toward the interior, but right now, the plan is to run it along the edge.
I would like to just ask a question, uh, just for information, ideas, suggestions. I know that this board has taken a, a vote in the past on the $1 million to, um, accept the donation or not. It was voted three to two not to, and I was one that voted, uh, to accept it. Uh, and I would like to ask the board members that, um, you know, any board members out there, that they have any suggestions, comments, ideas about what that land would be if, um, now that the, uh, the land has been open to, uh, and no restrictions. And Mr. Carpenter, I'll ask you first.
Well, I was the board member who asked about tax-exempt bonds, so, and I did say when we, um, when the vote was taken, what it is that I thought would be good. I would like to see a permanent conservation restriction on some of the land. Um, I think what this gentleman has mentioned would certainly fit very well with that. I think the land, having walked it, would certainly offer some very challenging, uh, trails for people of all ages. So I would think that that would be, I would certainly be in support of that. I do know that we did have conversations at different times, uh, different members of the public did talk about the need for senior housing, and in conversations over the last week, it came up again, which got me thinking, can we do this? How can we do it? And so I reached out to Ed and Julie, and we can do it. It's just a matter of how do we do it? Where's the details? So for me, I'd like to see passive recreation, um, much like what this gentleman's talking about, that people not only in the town but in the neighborhood can see this as a community park or a community space that they can enjoy, and, you know, that's, I definitely would like to see us, uh, explore an opportunity for senior housing because we have such a vital need, and that would make, uh, for me, I wouldn't want to sell it to, for, I wouldn't want to sell it to the developer. But if we can get closer to our 10%, while taking care of the needs and, and at least offering the opportunity for people who have lived in Auburn their entire life as they age to be able to stay in Auburn, I'm, I'm all for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Simontian?
Yeah, I'm going to back up for a minute. Um, this is the question that I had a few minutes ago, um, just to follow up on one other thing, um, either with, uh, Julie or Ed. Um, during the conversation about some of the different options, um, you mentioned that, you know, there could be some twists and turns in acreage values and things that. So considering where we are right now, mid-June, these options and some of the things that have to be hashed out legally, is there enough time to get those things done if, if we do decide to use a portion of that and, and ban the rest of it? Or are, are we already up against the clock here, um, to, to decide, to get a decision made?
I think it's a very tight schedule. It all depends how soon that decision is made, um, and how soon a real estate, um, appraiser could be, um, engaged, and I, I don't know how long it's going to take him or her to put a value on those parcels, whatever the acreage may be. Uh, certainly, I would think the open space piece would be somewhat straightforward.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And could move pretty quickly. I think it's the other piece that kind of complicates things. Once that's done, bond council has to review and approve of that allocation in value. I don't know, quite honestly, how long it would take them to do, to do their, their piece.
Yeah, I'm not trying to pin you down on an exact time, but ballpark, that pretty much means we got to do something fairly quick. Okay. And, and the other thing, um, I just wanted to mention, and I apologize for not, um, catching your last name, but, um, this gentleman and Mr. Carpenter, I, I've, I've brought this up before. There have been several residents, um, that have reached out to me who have run in some of the 5Ks that go on around Central Mass. Um, myself, I can tell you, I constantly, um, go to trails in other places because it, you know, when I'm out riding my bike or going for a walk with my daughters, I, I don't want to be walking on some of the roads that don't have sidewalks and have a lot of traffic. So I think we certainly, I would love to, um, explore that option, and not just there, but, um, you know, for what it's worth, there are some other places in town that, down the road. I'll give you a perfect example. I walked with Mr. Ethier, um, the route from the pumping station over by, um, Hardscrabble Road, behind there, all the way down, um, past Tanker Hill Road, there is a really nice loop that is behind the new middle school, goes all the way out, comes back. The old, there's an old, um, trolley bridge there, and there's some great scenery along the lake. Um, you know, that's another place potentially to have a really nice picturesque trail, but, I mean, we're talking about this, just throwing that out there. I think it's a great idea to do that. I think it's something that would be constantly used by, uh, Auburn residents, so.
Okay.
Comment regarding the...
Yes, would you please?
Regarding the trail, um, if we're going to be planning walking bicycling trail, could we keep in the back of our mind to make at least part of it handicap accessible?
Absolutely.
Because there's no place in this town for anybody using a wheelchair to go out in the wild and enjoy it without getting hit by a car.
Ah, I think that's great.
I think that's something we really need to keep in mind.
Yes, Mrs. Gleybridge?
Thank you. So, um, I just wanted to share a couple thoughts that I had, and, and I would agree with Mr. Carpenter that, you know, um, at this point, you know, I, I would agree that at the very least, we need to, um, place some of the land into, um, you know, to have a conservation restriction. Um, following up on something else that Mr. Carpenter mentioned, with the senior housing and reaching our, um, 10% designation of affordable housing, um, are we talking senior housing, um, affordable housing, or are we talking subsidized housing like we have at Packerjog Village? And if not, would, would senior housing be included in our 10% if it were the, um, the affordable, if it were the straight senior, low, low-income housing?
Through the chair, it would still have to meet the thresholds for affordable housing under Mass General Law, so depending on the cost, but subsidized housing definitely meets that. Uh, so-called affordable housing by definition under Mass General Law, that meets it, too. Some low, if you just call it low income and don't define what that low income is, it may or not meet it. A low to moderate income, uh, for instance, under the different levels that HUD establishes at the federal level, some levels may meet an affordable housing criterion, some may not. So you have to really look at the thresholds for each of the incomes.
So, and I know we're in early discussions here, but the discussions with the senior housing, are we discussing, you know, subsidized housing like we have at Packerjog in Stoneville? Is that...
I, I think, just speaking for myself, that's in, that's what I have in my mind.
Okay.
But I, I don't know what other people think.
No, and I'm just, we're all sharing ideas here, and I'm just taking notes and trying to understand. Um, and is that also, Mr. Carpenter, what you had in mind?
My, my intention is to have it count towards the 10%, but I would like to make sure that there's an income component to it, so that we, you know, we're, we're taking care of people as their incomes decline and their reserves decline. They have a safe, affordable place to live with their neighbors.
Mr. Chairman, just, just so you know, public housing is based on people's income and assets. So whether it's Auburn housing or it's the Ceteri housing, it's, they're both subsidized housing. And it's a percentage of the, um, person's adjusted income that determines how much their rent's going to be. I can, I can assure you that for the most part, the rents are far below market rate for what folks are paying.
And your doings?
I have a question to you, Mr. Simontian. As a matter of fact, uh, you came up with a few ideas about tonight, and I know the discussion we're trying to have with this, the joint meeting here tonight is to get some more information out, and I know that you were one of the ones that were, um, not receptive to the $1 million. Did you have any ideas or any suggestions to help get the ball rolling, expedite this a little bit? We have some idea of, um, why you didn't want to do that, and it just, full information...
Why I wasn't in favor of it?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I don't want to be redundant. I think I was pretty clear during that whole discussion. My, I basically don't want, number one, the land to be tied up for no use whatsoever for, until the end of time. Um, I don't think it's fair for us to put future boards in a position where, uh, you know, if we absolutely needed some sort of use for that land, now you're talking about possibly litigation to break the deal, you know. Um, we can't look down the road 30, 40 years. We have no idea what the needs of the town will be. So to take that large of a piece of land and say we're never going to use it for anything, it just didn't make sense to me.
Thank you. And you had?
Yeah, just one other thought. So, and, and I, I, the discussion on senior housing I always find intriguing, and, and I'm, I certainly support it. I'm just thinking, because I know that we've had discussions about other open space in town, and, and I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking, uh, early on in the discussions about purchasing the land and, and developer purchasing, we had discussions about having to develop infrastructure down there, the roads and such, and, and given, so I'm, I'm just thinking, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm happy to be told that I'm way off base here. Uh, if we were to, if, if we were to put senior housing there, it seems that we would then again have to do quite an infrastructure development there, um, to support that, and I'm, I'm just wondering if, if we have other open space that's maybe more centrally located in town where we wouldn't have to, um, make such an investment in, in infrastructure and, at the same time, um, wouldn't be, you know, such a distance, um, you know, for things like plowing, ambulances, fire, uh, police. So, you know, just a thought, because that was all part of the discussion, and I, I don't know. If we have something more centrally located, that might be a better place for something like that. Just, just an idea.
Yeah, just if I could, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I think we're having very, very early preliminary discussions about uses, and that was a thought that crossed my mind as well because it is kind of remote. But, um, one of the, you know, we can, there are a lot of grants that are available. I mean, this is very, very preliminary right now. But obviously, if we could find a parcel that was at or near a bus route, that would be much more palatable for obtaining grants. I can assure you of that. I thought of, you know, myself, I know the, the road isn't great, but it does go out to the Worcester side, the Greenwood Street side, um, where there is, you know, currently bus service. So I'm thinking down the road, you know, maybe there's an opportunity there, and maybe not, to expand the bus service from that side, because that would give folks an opportunity to take the bus to, um, the old Fair Plaza to do food shopping at, um, Price Chopper. They could go to Burlington Co. Factory. They could do banking over there. There's a lot of services available in that plaza. So I, you know, I guess for me, I'm just kind of trying to keep my, keep an open mind and listen to what everybody has to say, and, you know, housing is something that's very important to me, and I'm not saying it's the end-all-do-all, and I'm just really trying to get, get some information, and then maybe it's not doable, and maybe it's doable somewhere else.
I totally understand, and, and don't get me wrong. I'm not saying don't do it there. I'm just saying we had that discussion, and, you know, if there's somewhere that it's easier to develop infrastructure or it's already there, maybe it's just the better...
I'd just like to keep the options open. I mean, we've talked about, you know, the Housing Authority has talked about, um, reusing, perhaps, uh, having an opportunity to reuse the, um, Julia Bancroft School for Housing. But, you know, you never know what kind of obstacles you might run into there. That's a great place because it's so close to the bus line. But, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, get ideas, get information.
I'll have the town manager jump in here now.
Through the chair, thanks. I just want to, um, so, in, in case anyone wasn't here for that meeting or wasn't aware of it, we did present to the board of selectmen some information that Mr. Simontian just referenced regarding infrastructure improvements. And the board had asked us at the time, this was back in October, to have DPW look at what would the tentative cost be of, uh, improving Curtis Street to get access to that site, should we decide to use that site. At that time, we were looking at it for recreational purposes. We weren't looking at it for housing development, which is another whole issue. But, so to get Curtis Street improved just to get access to that site, I believe that's what Mr. Simontian is referencing, and that cost, so you will be aware through the Open Space Committee, we came up with 1.4 to 1.5 million as being a reasonable cost for reconstruction, and it also would include, uh, reconstruction of the street, a side of walk, and, uh, an access drive off of South Hold Meadow Road to, that's just to get into the property and including a detention basin. Uh, we had also done some analysis, uh, as to if the town actually built a road into the subdivision that had already been approved. So if the town wanted to parcel off and sell for single-family homes, the subdivision parcels that were there, whether you wanted those single-family homes to be affordable or senior affordable, um, that, that cost was about 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars for that road as well. So to, to look at something that the town is looking to get an income from, as you did say, we do have to keep in mind that there may be another capital outlay of another million and a half dollars or more just to get the infrastructure to develop a part of the land. Um, it doesn't mean you're not, it, it, there's not a good end goal there of the affordable housing component, which is great, but just, you're right, we do have to be aware of the road costs.
Mr. Simontian?
If we, uh, if we were just, if we were just going to use part of that land for what has been suggested for, uh, you know, passive recreation, um, trail-type place, what, what are the requirements on the town? Is it just to have access to it, or?
Uh, through the chair, when we looked at this in the fall, I think we discussed a couple of different, uh, access points that if we could link this land, there's a small 12-foot parcel that actually links this land to the Pappas Recreation Complex, so you could utilize the existing parking at the Pappas Recreation Complex and build the trail, which is part of the reason we went for this grant, to connect the land to that. So you could access it from that way. If you wanted to have the land accessible from Curtis Street, then you would be required to do some upgrades to Curtis Street, because as it stands now, I don't believe it could handle the traffic that we were looking at if you had some kind of recreational facility there.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, just from, just from what I've seen up there, I don't, I don't think that Pappas could handle the parking, um, for, I mean, we, the playground is going in now, uh, and there, there, they, when every field is in use, and this just happened over the weekend, at a softball game on Sunday, all the other fields were being used, and there were cars parked on the access road because there were no more parking spots. So I don't know if that would really be, if people were going up there to park and use the trail, that might, that's just going to add to that, so.
Mr. Carpenter?
I wanted to follow up on the chair's comment about why, uh, certain of us didn't vote for the 1 million, and we had had a conversation later last week and, and... And we had had a conversation later last week and Julie's talking about something that I had asked a question about. And I know the residents got a little irritated with me, that I was pushing for information about this property to see what we could do. When I asked the manager to talk to the anonymous donor and to see if we could put any facilities and to pick up on Mrs. Downey's comment about ADA, it's quite a distance between this parcel and that, especially if you have a young child or if you have mobility issues. The anonymous donor would not allow a parking facility of any kind, let alone bathroom facilities on the property. And I just don't, personally, for me, I don't see anybody having to do the 50-yard dash if they have to go to the bathroom, on top of the fact that, as Mr. Simoni mentions, the idea was, well, they can park at Pappas. Well, Pappas is a well-used and very busy area. So I don't think currently they have enough parking to fit the needs that they have, which I know was a concern of the planning board at the time, which was another cause for concern of certain members of the community. But, you know, we do have to think about uses. And I do not believe that the town has to pay 1.5 million dollars. We can make this as part of the RFP for a future developer. You know, many years ago, when they developed a commercial project down on Route 20, and forgive me, I forget the name of the street, but Acuity is on the corner, the state could come up with a million dollars to run a water line from the corner of Milbury Street, run it a mile down the road or more, to facilitate commercial and industrial development, which I personally think was a great investment. But I think if we can put a million dollars of taxpayer money into that type of infrastructure, I think we can put a million and a half or whatever it is. Because not only is it going to benefit whoever this may be, who is in senior housing, but Curtis Street is in deplorable condition. It does not have proper drainage, it does not have a proper width, it varies as you go down it. It has no sidewalks. This could be a two-for-one deal that could improve the lot and the mobility of the people on Curtis Street, as well as, you know, take a $3 million investment and put it towards a pretty substantial thing. Having said that, I agree with Mr. Simoni and Ms. Weston, we do need to look at all the parcels if something else makes sense. I think it's great that we, we look at that and even if we can get more senior housing or more housing on other tracks, that would be great.
Thank you. As, yes.
And to the chair, I just want to clarify, Mr. Carpenter's correct, it does not need to be the town. You could, the road within housing development could be the developer. You know, that is still an option. It is tough to get state funding for a town road. I mean, we get state funding for state roads, but state funding for town roads is a different story, especially if it's a private development at the end of it that it's leading to, it's not leading to job creation. The Mass DOT, Mass Works grant that we apply for, you have to link it to job creation. Unfortunately, it makes it harder to get the money. But another thing that we were, the reason I had mentioned the 1.5 million to follow up on what you said, Mr. Simoni, is because if we were to work with a charitable organization who wanted to lease the land for de minimis cost or purchase the land for de minimis cost, we're assuming that they may not have the money to develop the road or make any kind of roadway improvements that are needed to get into that facility. So we just have to keep in mind, if, if you want the tax-exempt status and you want to go with the charitable organization or the 501, whatever type of 501(c)(3) or subsidized housing through a state or federal program, I don't know that those organizations are prepared to take on the infrastructure costs. So that's, just want to throw it out. The end user may depend on how you can go. You can put it out for RFP and someone could take the whole thing, which would be great. And, but then that changes our tax-exempt status too. So it is, sorry, it is complicated. There's so many different options that we can look at here. But just to remind everyone, and bond council has reminded us, we don't need the board to decide the exact use. And I think that's critical. We need the board to decide, do you want to keep all 100 acres for some type of municipal use? Or do you want to say, you want to parcel off, I'm going to throw out, you know, 10, 20, 30 acres of that and say that you will come up with a use over the next several months or several years, that ultimately you want to do something with it? Those are your broader general questions that you have to look at and there is time for that, but for, we need to know how much acreage you'd want to set aside, as Eddie said, because then you've got to get an appraisal on it or a real estate professional. So we would have to move quickly to get a value to that. But you don't need to decide the end use of that, other than you want it to be some non-municipal, non-tax exempt use. So I think it makes the conversation a little easier, because it's hard to sit here tonight and say, what are we going to do with that land forever? But I think what you have to decide is, do you want to hold it for 10 years, as Ed mentioned, and, and have a tax exempt bond and have 10 years to decide? Or do you want to say, look, let's, right now, let's peel off whatever that subdivision amount is. It's already been looked at, we know what the boundaries are, quicker to put a value on it and bond the rest.
Simoni?
Whatever, whatever the use is going to be, and I'll, I'll stick to the one we've been talking about, just for the sake of argument. If, if we decided we wanted to take half of it to build passive recreation, I would, I would imagine that we would need someone who is an expert in developing that type of facility, trails and whatnot, to give us the best scenario to use that to come up with that type of facility. So we would need the time to have that. Because if we're, if we're going to take the rest of it and say, you know, down the road, it could be municipal use or whatever, we certainly don't want to put ourselves in a position where we use part of it and then go, oh, we should have done it a different way, because now it's going to be harder to access a building the way we set up the recreation. I would imagine we have to do something like that. At least, I would want to seek the advice of someone who's, you know, laid out trails and, and make the best use of that land, if that's what we decide to do. Or whatever, you know, whatever the determination is to use the land. We'd have to ask someone what the best possible layout and use, I think.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes, Chair, I would like it known that I also voted not to accept the million dollars. And I wanted to explain, I know we all explained our reasons back then, but in retrospect, if we had, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. And I think by not accepting it, it gives the residents and all these committees that are involved, time to stop and think of really what, what can be done that's going to benefit everybody. And it, and it's, we're not being told by a donator that, yes, you can have a bike trail, but you can't walk your dogs because of the messes of picking up, whatever. This allows us and the residents to really ask and see what we want as a community and to push for it at a time that's convenient for all of us, whether it be senior housing, whether it be affordable housing. I definitely would love to see a running trail. You certainly would never see me on it. But, but for those, I think that, you know, is wonderful. But I, in retrospect, I am very happy with my decision because it does not lock us into a short period of time with a huge piece of property. And if anything, for the town of residents, myself speaking as a selectman, it's going to be a learning lesson.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, there's still been a lot of information. I will ask anybody in the audience, if they've got any questions or comments, please bring them forward. Anything from the Open Space Committee? I know you've got quite a bit of work coming up, but Eddie, please.
I just want to let the board know, it does have the option of banning it for an additional year, up to one year. Certainly that comes with a price, you've got to pay short-term interest, but if we're going to bond it anyway, you've got to pay an interest in a six-month, at the six-month interval. So, once again, just an option the board can consider, if it wants to apply the brakes and, and consider this over a longer period of time.
Thank you. Has anybody got anything else for tonight? I know we've kicked a lot of information around, it's probably a good start. I don't know what your discussion entailed tonight about, I knew you were going to be coming here tonight, but, you know, just to get this ball rolling, get some information going. I think the office is always open for questions for anybody to come forward and get some information. So, good luck. And I look forward to a meeting together at some other point also.
Can I just say that the Open Space Committee will have its second meeting next Monday, the 15th, 7 o'clock in this, in this room, I believe, unless another one is available. So certainly if you folks want to come, of course, the door is open and the residents, I hope we have some residents that come to visit us and offer some feedback. So I want to thank the selectmen for the time, excuse me.
Thank you.
Did you say 7:00 PM? Did you say 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM, yes ma'am.
Mr. Carpenter?
I just wanted to thank, I know Mark is a new member, but I know four out of the five are existing members and put a lot of work into the Open Space Committee in addition to other committees that, that you've all served on and Mark serves on more than one as well. So I just want to thank you for undertaking it. It is a lot of work and I appreciate your continued commitment to the town. We need about 500 more just like you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you for attending. Before we go, I make an intended motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank you, the Open Space, for attending tonight and you are?
I just need to ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting, please.
Please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And to this board, I know that we have a, you know, an August, is it an August date?
August 10th at the very latest.
August 10th. We may want to have another public hearing and we could possibly have another public hearing on June 22nd, if that's the wish of the board.
Yeah, I think, my opinion is do it as quickly as possible.
I would like to?
Is that in the form of a motion?
Go ahead.
I don't want, I don't want to make the motion. I'd rather let everyone voice their opinion before I make.
I'd like, I'd like us to wait to see what the Open Space does. Maybe we could do it in July, the first meeting in July. And only a housekeeping thing that I think, Mrs. Goodrich asked for a volunteer to attend the meetings and I'm certainly willing to do so. I won't attend every meeting because they don't need a devil or angel on their shoulder, they know what to do. But I will happily keep track and keep the board abreast throughout the process.
Anybody else got any comments?
July 13th, meeting first meeting.
Well, in light of that comment, if we don't want to go with the public hearing on the 22nd, I would ask that we have some sort of report back on the 22nd, so we know what kind of progress is being made.
Well, that's just my preference, Mr. Chairman. If, if the board thinks that July, I know that's a popular vacation week too, so right around that time, maybe June 22nd would be better. I don't know. I'm just expressing a preference. But I, I do know that, and I don't know what other members have planned for the summer.
Our first July meeting is the 13th.
Fifth Monday on 29th, if everyone's available. I don't know that everyone is.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, even, Mr. Anderson?
I think that possibly having that sooner than later might be a better guide for the Open Space Committee, if we get some public input and hopefully some folks show up and, because we need some, we need some direction here and that is a great way to get it.
Okay.
We, we do have a fifth Monday this month, the 29th, so that could potentially be the in-between of the 22nd and the 13th, if members want to just dedicate that night to that one. I'm just throwing it out there, we do have a fifth Monday this month.
I'll be away that week, but sorry to the board. No, the board, the board can certainly, I don't want to delay the process, the board can certainly take it up.
Again, if the, the board is willing, then we'll have a report on the 22nd and on the 29th, we have a public hearing and we can discuss it further. That'll give us a little input for the 22nd and then the 29th, we'll be prepared to discuss further because of what information we received from you. If that's the wish of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we schedule a second public hearing for June 29th.
Second.
And that'll be at 7:15, 7:05?
Could you just, in your favor, make sure you have a quorum? I know Dan won't be here, everyone else.
All right, you'll?
I will be away.
You will be away. And Mrs. Brotherton, will you be here? I just want to be sure of a quorum.
Monday to 29th.
Yes, I will be here.
Okay. And Mrs. Goodrich?
As far as I know.
Okay, so we should have a quorum, so most of it?
I'll just schedule it at 7:00. It may be the only agenda item.
Yep.
Okay, so at 7:05, why don't we schedule for 7:05? And so the motion's been made for June 29th at 7:05 for a public hearing on the Open Space Committee for the South Old Road property. And is there any further comment, question?
I would just ask that we ask the press, members of the press, to do what they can to publicize it so that the public, not just within the immediate vicinity, but within the town who might have ideas, will be aware of the meeting and that they can come in and talk.
Okay. So the motion's been made in second and any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
That's what they've been waiting for, but that should be next anyway.
Let's see.
I just want to make sure we have?
No, thank you.
Because we had talked, we were.
All right. So the next item we have on the agenda for tonight is a transient vendor license, Richie's Ice Cream. Is there anybody here?
No.
Please. Would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Richard Van Cooley. I live at 34 Jade Hill Road, Auburn, Mass. And I have an ice cream truck and I like to get a license to sell in the town of Auburn.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
Can you just speak into the microphone sometimes?
Okay. Did you get my name?
I didn't.
Richard Van Cooley.
The microphone may be off over there, I'm not sure.
Do you want me to come up, come up there?
He'll, he'll get it from the, do you have the mic on? He's got it on now.
Oh, yeah, he's got it on now. Thank you.
My name is Richard Van Cooley. I live at 34 Jade Hill Road, Auburn, Mass. And I'm applying for license to sell ice cream in the town of Auburn. I have a small ice cream truck.
Is any members have any questions? Mrs. Goodrich?
So, do you have, do you have a set route? Will you have a set route? Do you know where you'll be visiting?
At the moment, I don't have a set, a set route. I'm going to go to special events if they have them in town, like the fireworks and things. And I'm going to be, most of the time, I'm going to be in Worcester, but I just want to have it for Auburn, because I, I live here, in case they have special events. And I'm going to be doing a few streets maybe on the way home when I come back, back from Worcester. I already have a license for Worcester.
Okay, great. So I guess I just would want to, to inquire to the town manager as to setting up on town-owned property and what additional license or permit he would need for that. I know that the fourth, the Independence Day celebration go through the recreation and culture, but if he were to have an ice cream park, truck and just say want to park up at the Pappas Recreation Complex on a Saturday, I believe a permit is, an additional permit is required through the town? Yes. So I just want the applicant to?
Yeah, through the chair, that's true. To participate in the Independence Day celebration, we do sell spaces to vendors.
Right, that's what they told me.
Yeah, so you have to pre-register and go through that process. For setting up on public property such as the library or the fire station, you also need to go through our office, ultimately get an open air permit, because we have to make sure that there's no other town event taking place that day on the par, on the property. And likewise, at the Pappas Complex, we need to know in advance, that would be something you'd have to apply for a permit, because we do have a concession stand there, so, operated by the Little League. So we have not generally, other than the Independence Day, allowed vendors in during the games.
Yeah. Most of the time, I'll be on, if I, if I go through Auburn, I'll stop in a few streets with the truck. So I want to make sure I have the license. I already have, got cleared from the police department, I have all those permits, I have my state license. I went to Mr. Benoit's Board the other day. Was it, what was it, was it DCG? And so to get approval from the Board of Health, they said I had to come here, so I don't know. What else?
So you've met with the DCG, and you understand...
Oh, yes, I met with...
The requirements through them?
Everything was, how did it come out?
I wanted to make some mention on the Board of Health.
Mrs. Coyle?
Do you have a...
Would you please join us up here? Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you? So I know Mr. Van Cooley has been working with my assistant, Eileen, for the requirements to be an ice cream vendor in town. Obviously, the police have requirements, the selectmen, and so I know Mr. Van Cooley has gone through the DCG process. This, we're checking off each of the departments that are involved in this process, and so this was one of the items that he has completed. So he'll come back to our office with these completed requirements, and we'll be able to move forward with licensing him. He'll have to have an inspection of his truck, which I believe Ms. Alexander has already gone through and explained to Mr. Van Cooley, so we can have you follow up in our office, and we can take it from here.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments, questions? Mr. Carpenter.
I just have a question. This is my first transient vendor, so I did look at our book, but I didn't realize the police had a role. Is there a requirement either of ourselves or of the police department that we designate a certain streets?
I don't want to answer for the police, but the requirement to go through the police department is fairly new within the past year. So the police do additional checks, such as like a quarry sorri, obviously to protect the children that ice cream vendors typically are around. So they have their own requirements that they'll do, maybe some fingerprinting and so forth, so they'll do what they need to do as far as if there's certain restrictions for where the ice cream vendors are allowed in town. I would imagine that we can explore that here at this point. Typically, the ice cream vendors, in my experience, don't necessarily set up in one area, you know, they're, and I don't, I don't want to tell you your business, but I think by traveling around, they probably, you know, make more of the potential for their business. So just in my experience, unless it's an event that, such as like Independence Celebration or, I know we also have like a fall festival where we'll have certain vendors come, those are set for the day because of the type of event it is, but for ice cream trucks, they're usually traveling around town, so unless there's something that you wanted to restrict under, you know, certain permitting, that wouldn't be something that we would normally say you can't go here and only stay here. Does that answer the question?
Yes. Well, I was just wondering, Mrs. Goodrich brought it up, so I was wondering if this was a past practice of the board that we asked for, just for my identification, that we asked for a specific route.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to be sure that the applicant had the understanding of parking on, on public property and what the requirements are for that.
Good enough. Thank you.
So under the open air permit, are you referring to like setting up at a town-owned facility?
Exactly, exactly. Just so, you know, everyone knows, you can't just set up and sell your wares, whatever it is, on municipal property.
Sure.
That's separate from this license.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions recommended by the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Can I just ask a follow-up question to Mr. Van Cooley? How long have you been doing this, sir?
Well, I've been doing it, well, I did it for 33 years, then I retired, and I don't like staying home. I've been home for 20 years. I went and bought a little truck just to keep my mind occupied. I'm not going to work every day, because it's going to be a part-time thing. It's not a gun hole. I'm 68 years old, and I'm only looking maybe three, four hours a day, but I want to have all the proper licenses.
Very good, thank you.
So that's...
The motion's been made and seconded. Any...
Just for housekeeping matter, just that he has listed his hours of operation Monday through Sunday, 12 noon to 7:00, so that be included on the license as well.
I just put that down in case it be covered. I'm not going to work every day.
Oh, I know, but just, just so, you know...
So I'll be covered if I had to go out to a special event. I have a lot of birthday parties, people have been calling, so...
Nice. So you have, you want to put that 12 noon to 7:00 P.M. Monday to Sunday on the license?
As is stated on the application.
You want to amend the motion, or you just...
Well, I'm not sure that we have to. I just want to point that out, that that is on the license application, that we're approving the license application, so those are the set hours.
Okay. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Okay.
Safe travels.
Stop on ice cream.
Okay. Under gift acceptances, we've had the DPW under the library. We have Edward and Patricia Healy in memory of Alice Leroux, $20.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Backed in.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? For the animal compound, Linda Lozon, $50.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And for the fire department, Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 554, $400.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. We have no proclamations in front of us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, just on the side of caution, because it is listed, as you're probably aware, the fire department is having an award ceremony, so this Thursday, and I would just ask that, or make a motion that in the case that the chief were to ask for any recognition that may be forthcoming, that we approve that. I'm not sure that it's made public, but if the chief asks for a recognition for a specific award, that the board approve a proclamation.
Okay, so you're asking if something does come up on Thursday night that the chief...
Between now and Thursday.
Between now and Thursday?
And we can just sign it, you know, the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
There's an award ceremony that the board has been invited to.
So she's made a motion to, well...
Authorize her proclamation for an award recipient that, that will be recognized on Thursday night's event that has not been made public, that will be made public on Thursday night.
And we'll all sign it, madam?
We'll just, I mean, I'm not sure if we have time, Sharon, sometimes we'll just put by the Board of Selectmen with everyone's name, unless everyone thinks they can get in.
I will happily second it, and I know we have the warrant to sign, so we'd be there before Thursday, hopefully all of us, so we should be able to sign it.
Is there any further discussion? Sharon, have you got the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, under committee reappointments, looking at our policies for reappointments, we don't usually have the members of those boards come back. If there is a new member coming forward, we will interview, but our policies don't require them to be back. Excuse me. So under our first committee reappointments, we're going to the school buildings committee, and that's for William Westerland and James Bonifiglio. They want to be reappointed for terms expiring in June 30th, 2018.
I'd make a motion to appoint both gentlemen with our thanks for their continued service.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Just, and this would apply to all of them, but I absolutely will support Mr. Westerland and Mr. Bonifiglio, but were there any additional applications for this?
Through the chair, there were not.
So there were no additional applications for the school buildings committee? Okay.
So motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now for the finance committee, Mallory O'Brien, Kimberly Holstrom, Ed Coleman have indicated they want to be reappointed for terms expiring in June 30th, 2018. I'll make a note that I have put in disclosure agreement from 2012, when I appointed my wife to the finance committee, and I do have no financial benefit to this.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we reappoint Mrs. O'Brien, Mrs. Holstrom, and Mr. Coleman with our thanks for their continued service until June 30th, 2018.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to confirm that there's also no applications for finance. I know we were struggling.
Through the chair, there were no additional applications specific for this. We had a couple of applicants who had indicated they'll go on any committee, but given that we have a lot of vacancies to fill, there was no one who specifically asked for any of these three committees.
Great, thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And under the ZBA, we have Robert Tatro and Richard Cussy. They both, their terms expire on June 30th, and they've been contacted, and if they want to be reappointed, Mr. Tatro has responded that he would like to be reappointed. So we will vote on Mr. Tatro tonight, and the term would be until June 30th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I would happily make a motion to reappoint Mr. Tatro with our appreciation and thanks for his continued service to June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Can we, can we thank Mr. Tatro for being the only one to send his email in a nice, readable font?
I'll second that.
Now, we have a drain layers license, and as before, we don't usually have them in. This is for J.D. Construction Enterprises of Auburn, and enclosed in the package, you'll have your application documents. Sure I have this in front of me? Okay, is there any questions, comments?
Just myself. I wasn't sure if we required them. I have a vague recollection that we require them to give us references, that that was a sticking point at one point, and Mr., well, whoever owns J.D. Construction did not supply them. He just said on file, so I guess I'm just asking if my recollection is correct.
Well, we've, in the past, we've had applications come forward, and they're reviewed by the sewer department, and mostly by the head of the sewer department, Mr. Mitchell, and he has a memorandum here in the back, and it's attached to the copy of drain layers license from J.D. Construction. This company has been previously licensed, where the town has performed work that meets or exceeds the sewer division's rules and regulations. We therefore recommend issuance of a drain layer license by the Board of Selectmen.
And I have no problem issuing it. I'm just saying, if we're asking others to do it, everybody should have to do it. So I don't know if it's a faulty recollection, which is why I'm bringing it up and asking for clarification for my...
I will ask the town manager to address that.
Okay.
It is my understanding it is not a requirement. Sometimes people give letters of recommendation, but we don't ask for it as a requirement.
Okay. Oh, that's fine. I'll make a motion that we approve the drain layers license.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Goodrich?
Nope, just that all the standard language be included.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. We need to read that into the...
I will happily read it into the record, but I will ask a question, if we can just make it a standard condition, seems that it's constantly repetitively mentioned. I know other boards do have standard conditions. This could be the standard condition for the board, and then if we had any secondary, but that's for another day. I will make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, under the town manager items, we have 6B, which is a recommendation regarding the elementary schools from the Elementary School Reuse Advisory Group.
Thank you, through the chair. I've enclosed in tonight's packet a copy of a letter of recommendation that I received last Monday from Kevin Kennedy, who is the chairman of the Elementary School Reuse and Disposition Advisory Group, and they have been meeting diligently, I believe, since January to look at both the Julia Bancroft School and the Mary D. Stone School, and make recommendations to the town manager for what their preferred use would be of these properties. Per a process that we had put into place at this point, what we're doing on our end is town administration is now taking this letter and having several internal meetings through an internal review team consisting of myself, the chief financial officer, the director of the development of the Department of Inspection Services, the DPW director, the treasure collector, and the town planner, and likely the assessor as well, to make sure that we're looking at their recommendations now from all angles as far as what would the cost be. So just, you have the letter in front of you, but for those of you who don't see it and are wondering, the two, the main recommendations are, for the Julia Bancroft School, the advisory committee has recommended that the town use that for, dispose of it for senior housing in accordance with Chapter 30B procurement. They would prefer to see it go to the Auburn Housing Authority if it does qualify for an exemption, and we did find out this evening from the IG's office that it would qualify for an exemption of sorts, but there is still a process that has to be followed under 30B with regard to determination of value. So while it could be transferred, I don't know if it could be gifted without a monetary value assigned to it. So that's something we need to look at. Their preferences for senior housing, preferably for Auburn residents, although we're not allowed to define whether you live in Auburn or not live in Auburn, federal government has said that we can't do that, so what we can do is say that senior housing is the preference here. For the Mary D. Stone School, the advisory group has recommended that the facility be used for additional administrative meeting and training space for the town of Auburn. And some of the conditions of so-called recommendations that they put on that for us to consider were that in addition to the interior use that would be used for some type of municipal use, they would like to see us preserve the old facade of the original building, and they want to preserve the open space and playgrounds behind it, and they'd like us to look into whether we can be eligible for grants to the MHC, Mass Historic Commission, for the rehab of the building. And they've also are hoping that the school department transfers it to us between September 1st and September 30th. That being said, there are, there's a lot of work for us to now do to determine if that building can be used for municipal purposes and at what point. And I'll just give you a quick example. We met over there today, took a tour of the facility with the building commissioner as well, which I meant to, I meant to mention that Caleb would be involved, DPW, myself, Ed, Joe Fahey, and Chris Hugo to looking at the wiring and the infrastructure. We were looking to see if the school department did declare it surplus, and we had it available to us beginning in September, what could we put in there now without doing anything while we look to see long-term what we could do with the building? And we need to further delve into this, but it appears that we can't do anything with it. It's a change of use without putting in a full sprinkler system. So that is a number one issue that we have to look at. So if it changes from an educational slash school use to anything other than that, including storage, we will be required to do a sprinkler system. We also, at some point, have to look at handicapped accessibility and a potential outside elevator to access all the floors. There is some space on the first floor in the back part of the building that's accessible from the main level, so you can get in, handicapped accessibility, but you can't to the rest of the building. So from here, what we are going to be doing is Bill Coils arranged for us to meet with an architect. What we'd like to find out is, how much would it cost for us to get a quick architectural study? Because they're the ones that can look at it and say, what do you need to do that building to convert it to municipal use? What needs to be done? What needs to be done as far as particularly sprinkler systems, handicapped accessibility, access ramps, and any type of electrical, anything that needs to be done to bring that building up to code for municipal use before we decide to go forward and put all our offices there? We need to find out, is this a $500,000 project? Is this a $3 million project? And if that's the case, how are we going to pay for it? When are we going to pay for it? And when would we be able to finally move in? In the interim, the other decision we have to look at is, where would the responsibility lie for the maintenance and upkeep of that building until such time that the town takes it over, or in the case of Julia Bancroft, it's sold? So there are a lot of... So there are a lot of questions that we have to ask. We need to continue to work with the school department on this. I think Mrs. Simoni has a question.
Simone. Just one. So in both these cases, the school department has to declare the surplus, and then if Julia Bancroft has turned over the housing authority, their town has no more skin in the game there, right? There's, there's no cost that we bear for any...
Through the chair, that would all be determined in the, if, if there was an agreement to turn the property over, all those details would have to be ironed out in an agreement. If it has to go out to bid, you can put it in the criteria for the RFP that once it is purchased, it is owned by whomever. If the town wanted to do a long-term lease, you would have to have an agreement that said that they would be taking over the maintenance and upkeep of the property until such time that they converted it to senior housing use. So all of that gets worked out in an agreement.
Well, I just remember during the discussions on, on building the new middle school, one of the, one of the reasons given for Julia Bancroft was that the, the conditions of the plumbing, they had had all kinds of problems, and it was a pretty substantial investment to, to even try to revamp that. So, you know, I would hope that's not a cost the town would...
Through the chair, if we were to dispose of the property, you know, make that final recommendation to dispose of it, we would recommend that we dispose of it to a buyer or lessee that would take 100% of the responsibility for the maintenance, upkeep, and any repairs or rehab to the property.
All right, thank you.
But on the flip side, through the, the Mary D. School, that's an issue.
Yeah, totally understand. That becomes ours if we take it.
And I, you know, first of all, I want to thank the committee. They, the advisory group did a great, great job. They really did a lot of work on this. Matt Benoit provided assistance to them with all kinds of backup information. He did a great job. And Caleb Moody, the building inspector, went through the building with him and Joe Fahey, so they could, they really got a good understanding for the building. There are some challenges in that building, but I would also say we could certainly use the space. There is no question, we are out of space here. We are filled to the brim. You know, there, there's no room in some of our offices. We don't have a meeting room that's bigger than this. So there are needs, but that building, as it is now, is probably almost double the size of what we need for our own town hall needs. So therefore, we need to look at whether there are other needs at the school department. Is there another not-for-profit in town that might be interested in some space? So there are a lot of decisions that have to be made, but we have to look at, what is the total cost to rehab that building so it can be habitable but for a non-school use? And then make some decisions from there. So we're not there yet. I just wanted you to see the recommendation and understand that we're looking at all these issues. Hopefully, we'll be able to come back to the board with a recommendation. Again, we, we want to keep in mind the cost, but also minimizing any impact to the neighborhood, which was key.
Okay. Just so that we understand, you're not looking for any direction or anything from the board? This is just strictly an informational?
It's informational, but certainly, you know, as we go on, the feedback from the board would be appreciated. At some point, we'll come back and make a formal recommendation to you as to what to do with the property based on the information that we have. These recommendations are sound recommendations. They make sense. Now, we just need to see if they make sense from a financial perspective, and, and perhaps they, they do, and even, you know, the town may need to make a decision. Is it worth investing the money into that building to give us the expanded space we need? And, you know, it very well may. It's just we can't make that recommendation to you unless we have some costs. So we are looking to see if we can get an architect to work with us, hopefully for under $10,000. That's what we're looking at, to go through the whole building and tell us exactly what needs to be done. It's, it's a pretty big project, so we're going to meet with one next Monday and see if we can even do it in that price range.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else on that? Okay. Moving on, Senate Bill 1531 update.
Yep, I'll be really quick. This is, I, I sent an email to the board, but for the public to know. First of all, I want to thank very much Senator Michael Moore for supporting Senate Bill 1531, which is an act relative to a municipality's right of first refusal on agricultural land under Chapter 61A. We've all been through the process now. We all know the, the challenges in the existing legislation, and we are bound to follow the process in that legislation, specifically under chapter, under section 14. And we found from that process that it is, some of those dates and deadlines and processes are nearly impossible for a municipality to get through. For a city, it may not be as, as challenging because they don't have to have town meeting. They have city council that can meet every week and take appropriate action. We have to have town meeting, and in some cases, we may need to go to a full vote, and there is not time in the current legislation to afford anyone the opportunity to do that. We're not the only town that's going to run into this, but many towns have run into it. Since that happened, we approached Senator Moore, we met with him, and explained what our challenges were, and asked for him to file legislation to amend 61A so that we can expand those timeframes and make it a little easier, not just for us, but for every town in the Commonwealth. So the Joint Committee on Revenue held a hearing on it last Tuesday, which I attended. The testimony is in your packet. Later that day, also, I had asked the Mass Municipal Association to consider it for their support, and they notified me on Wednesday that they will be supporting this legislation as well. From there, I don't know that, you know, we'll, we'll have to wait and see if it passes, but certainly we have a lot of support for it. We're trying to drum up support from other communities to contact their legislators as well, to, to see if we can get this done. So if and when we go through a Chapter 61A process in the future, we'll have a little bit more leeway with timeframes.
Is there a timeframe on now on this, for them to bring it to a vote?
Well, it's been before the Joint Committee on Revenue, so if they want to take no action and they're not sure which way to go, they could bury the bill, so to speak, and it could just end up in nowhere before this legislative session. If they wanted to take action on it, our hope is they would take action on it this fiscal year because they had the hearing last week. So, you know, it would help us, and the basic gist is we're asking to extend that 120-day period that we all struggled with. It's too much to do in 120 days to 180 days. We also asked to extend the 90-day period that we had to close on all the financing to 120 days. And we asked that some language be put in there that requires the seller to get back to us with a signed purchase and sale within 30 days, because right now, there's no requirement for the seller to turn that agreement back to you in any specific timeframe. So hopefully, if it gets through, these changes will help other communities as well.
Okay, thank you. There's no tabled items. The last meeting we had, I did ask to have some information put on the agenda for the open space and South Old Road, and that has been covered by the tabled items, so there are none tonight. And under the Board of Selectmen member items, I have one here on review of proposed policies submitted to the subcommittee. I know that in the past, I haven't got a list of them. I brought my policy book with me, but I haven't got a list of all the ones that the subcommittee has been working on, and I wanted to see if we could get in, maybe in the near future, we can get some idea of where we are with the committee's review of some of the policies that have been submitted, and so we can close them up or get them going, put them on the books. Ms. Goodrich?
So, so Mrs. Brotherton and I have, you know, over the last year, served in that capacity, and with the reorganization of the board, I'm certainly happy to continue serving in that capacity, and if Mrs. Brotherton is, then we'll schedule something and bring something back to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting under, well, we can put that under tabled items and bring that forward. Are there any public comments? Mr. Benoit?
Good evening, members of board, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I just have a question regarding the open space committee meeting. You scheduled a meeting for June 22nd for, to receive an update from the committee and a public hearing for June 29th.
That's correct.
I just wanted to know if, and I beg your pardon if I missed this, if the open space committee will be joining you as a joint meeting for either of those two meetings?
I believe that would probably be in the best interest so that we have both groups here discussing what is going on. We'll get an update on the 22nd and then on the 29th, and both committees come together, then we can discuss that in a public hearing.
Okay.
Mrs. Weston?
Mr. Chairman, I just forgot, I wrote down the notes. There was a discussion on the 22nd, but the motion was only to have a hearing on the 29th.
Yes.
So I'm not certain whether you didn't back and take us to give you that again.
Okay. There was a motion, there was a motion put forward tonight for the 22nd to have a report back from Mr. Carpenter, to come back to our board with whatever progress, whatever discussion, just a summary of where you are. And then on the 29th, we, I don't think we, you're shaking your head no, and I don't believe we discussed having, you know, both boards here, but I think it would be a good idea to be doing that.
Sorry to bring that up again. I apologize. I just, I'm going to be away.
No, that's perfectly all right. I'm glad you clarified that.
Okay, I just, I'm going to be away. I wanted to make sure I planned it correctly for everybody.
Thank you.
Chairman, I think...
The motion, the motion was for a public hearing on the 29th.
Oh, it was a, yeah, it's a motion on 29th for a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I think my intent was...
An invitation to the, the open space committee. Yes, Mr. Carpenter?
My intent was, was to serve as the go-between, if you will, between us and the committee. I wouldn't think that we would need a joint, I would say, I would agree with you, and I would happily make the motion that we invite them to attend the meeting on the 29th. I think that would be a great idea.
Okay, so a motion's been made to invite the open space committee to our public hearing on the 29th of June. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Under public comments, I do have one. It's been a little bit of a, a task to get all members of this board to sign proclamations and also to sign the payroll, and it is our responsibility to sign the payroll as presented every week, but it is also, we take a vote as a board to put our proclamations, and it is, being that vote is taken, then it's our responsibility to sign those proclamations before they are presented. So I would ask that everybody on the committee, on the board here, to make a, an attempt, an effort to get to town hall, to the selectmen's office, to sign any proclamations, any, and the payroll once a week, and any other paperwork that may come forward that we may be interested in. Thank you. Mr. Simone?
Just one comment on that. We used to, we used to at least, whoever the third person was to sign the payroll warrant, used to let everyone else know, and at some point, we stopped doing that. And it's hard sometimes, but I've, I've come up here on several occasions, and there's already four signatures. It really doesn't require the fourth or fifth. So, you know, for that convenience, I'm just asking if we can, you know, either send, the third person send an email quickly to Sharon, and Sharon can reach out to the board so that we're not, you know, communicating as a quorum behind the scenes on something, but, I mean, it just, it doesn't require all five of us, and, you know, it's sometimes...
No, it doesn't. And I understand what you're saying, but it, it does not require all five signatures, but it is our responsibility, when we took our position on this board, to make an attempt to get up here, to do our due diligence, and that's what I'm asking for tonight.
Yeah, understood.
Is there anything else? Mr. Carpenter?
Not on that top. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the town manager for the great job she did in navigating the traffic into Boston, which I was in the same traffic, and I found out later that there was an accident, which is why we all spent three hours on the commute. But, you know, I really appreciate it, and I appreciate Senator Moore, you know, taking up the charge, and I would like to make a motion that we send a letter of thanks to Senator Moore and Representative Frost, thanking them for their help on this, this item, and...
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, to send a letter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Absolutely.
Aye opposed? Thank you. If there's nothing else, we have minutes from November 24th. You all had a chance to look through them. Is there any questions, comments? No, we'll accept them as presented. And nothing to come before the board tonight, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Good night.[1772.41][1772.41][music]